Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's Town Council meeting. It is May 4th at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Rule call please.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clements.
Excused.
Counselor Estrada.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Pellicwen.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Present.
Counselor Vecchia.
Present.
Eight here.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is considering except Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, April 27, 2015.
(inaudible).
Any corrections or amendments? Seeing none, it's simple hand vote is fine.
I'd like to abstain, please.
Okay, sure. All those in favor then? All right. And one abstention? Thank you. Four, Subcommittee Reports. The first is General Government. I will just briefly read those for Counselor Clements. A meeting of the General Government Subcommittee Meeting was held on Monday, April 28th, in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were Chairwoman Clements, Committee Members Vandal, Citizen Member Mike James. Also in attendance were Counselors Moriarty and Carrasco, Steves, Manna, Town Manager Kevin Pecos, and DPW Director Heather Blakely. Counselor Pellicwen is excused and Holly Christo is absent. Chairwoman Clements called the meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Agenda item number one, review and vote to approve fiscal year 2016 Accountant Budget. Mr. Pecos said the accountant budget has been changed to reflect the reduction back to an S7 position for the accountant's clerical position. A motion was made by Mr. James and seconded by Counselor Vandal with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the amended fiscal year 2016 Town Accountant Budget. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to zero. Agenda item number two, discuss and vote to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Southbridge and Charlton, and submit to council for ratification. Mr. Pecos said that there have been some key breakthroughs this year. A joint meeting between Charlton and Southbridge was held to discuss some of the issues. Mr. Pecos, Ms. Blakely, and our town lawyer drafted the attached contract for review and approval of the council. Discussion was held on several areas of the contract. A motion was made by Counselor Vandal and seconded by Counselor Carrasco with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Sturbridge and Charlton. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing.
Excuse me?
Yes.
That's the town of Southbridge. You said Sturbridge.
Did I?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a big no now. Thank you. Motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Vandal and seconded by Mr. James. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. Counselor Carrasco voted on that as well. Meeting adjourned at 7:47 PM. Respectfully submitted, Evelyn Rivera, Recording Clerk. To my recollection, I do not recall any general government meetings coming up. Let me check real quick to see if I'm forgetting one, and I don't see one on the calendar at the moment. So we'll move on to B, DPW, Counselor Vandal.
No, no report, no meeting schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Pellicwen.
Thank you. A meeting of the EHS Subcommittee was held on Wednesday, April 29th, 2015, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Counselor Moriarty, Counselor Carrasco Jr., Counselor Steves, Counselor Vecchia, and Citizen Members Martina Shea and Kristen O'Clair. Also in attendance were Counselor Estrada, Counselor Manna, Town Manager Pecos, Andy Peltier, Karen Herneus, Margaret Morrissey, Mike Trombley, Steve Roenfeld, Cheryl Stanton, Erin Osborne, Mary Beth Scrippsak, Bill Latoy, William Bishop, Scott Lozo, Brent Abrahamson, Erin Quinney, Cara Donovan, Colleen Culligan, Roger Innastelcoette. I called the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Agenda item number one, review and approve fiscal year 2016 Library Budget. Mrs. Morrissey said the changes in the library budget are, a position has been eliminated, natural gas has been added, and there is solar net metering credit. A motion was made by Counselor Vecchia and seconded by Counselor Steves with a favorable recommendation to council to approve FY 2016 Library Budget in the amount of $199,213, which is a 1.3% decrease. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, seven to nothing. Agenda item number two, review and vote, I'm sorry, review and approve fiscal year 2016 Health Department Budget. Some of this budget is funded by Casella. The town funds $200,683 out of this budget. A motion was made by Counselor Vecchia and seconded by Counselor Moriarty with a favorable recommendation to council to improve the FY 2016 Health Department Budget in the amount of $808,164, which is a 1.52% increase. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, seven to nothing. Agenda item number three, review and approve fiscal year 2016 Veterans Community Center and Recreation Budgets. And I said we would vote on these individually. So 3A, Veterans Community Center Budget. Mr. Pecos said this budget is level funded. Mr. Trombley said this budget also includes the RMV expenses, which are reimbursed by the RMV. A motion was made by Counselor Vecchia and seconded by Counselor Carrasco Jr. with a favorable recommendation to council to approve FY 2016 Veterans Community Center Budget in the amount of $102,648, which is a 1.78% increase. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, seven to nothing. 3B, Veterans Benefits and Veterans Memorial Budget. Mr. Trombley said the Veterans Memorial Funds covers any care for the veterans' memorials. The Veterans Benefits Funds is for vets who have fallen on hard times. The funds are reimbursed by the state at 75% approximately one year later. A motion was made by Counselor Vecchia and seconded by Counselor Steves with a favorable recommendation to council to approve FY 2016 Veterans Benefits, Veterans Memorial Budget in the amount of $1,242,000, I'm sorry, $1,242,680, which is a 7.25% increase. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, seven to nothing. 3C, Recreation Budget. Mr. Pecos said this is a fairly new budget with a new recreation director. It presently encompasses four programs, the summer program at West Street, the town pool, the youth program, and the summer concerts. Mr. Roenfeld said a lot of his time is being taken up for fundraising. Mr. Pecos stated the town hall employees are funding one of the 14 concerts planned for the summer. A motion was made by Counselor Carrasco Jr. and seconded by Martina Shea with a favorable recommendation to council to improve the FY 2016 Recreation Budget in the amount of $40,009, which is a 20.74% increase. Vote by a show of hands, six for and one against, and that was Counselor Vecchia who was opposed. Agenda item number four, review and approve fiscal year 2016 School Budget. Ms. Stanton discussed the school department presentation. Discussion was held on various sections of the presentation. Southbridge is a Level IV district, and most of the budget increase is to hire staff to address programs and services needed. The town's proposed budget for the school department is $25,537,820. The school's proposed budget is $28,255,846.09, which is an increase of $2,718,026.09. Mr. Bishop asked what the effect of not receiving the requested budget would be. Ms. Stanton said that if the increase is not supported, approximately 14 positions will be lost. Counselor Moriarty asked that any money saved on the town side of the budget to be given to the school department. A motion was made by Counselor Vecchia and seconded by Counselor Carrasco with an unfavorable recommendation to council to approve, I'm not sure if that's correct.
They were in favor of it.
They weren't?
It was a favorable recommendation.
Yeah, that was a favorable recommendation. Okay.
No, the first one was unfavorable, because this is the original amount requested.
We voted it down.
But if you- The motion itself was a, was a motion to recommend, but that motion failed.
Yes.
Right.
So it should say that it, that it should be that the motion was made with a favorable recommendation, and then that it fails, which is, that part is accurate. So it's the "un" is the part that is inaccurate.
Okay. So a motion was made by Counselor Vecchia and seconded by Counselor Carrasco with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the FY 2016 School Budget in the amount of Vote by a show of hands, two for, five against. Sean Moriarty, Amelia Pellicwen, Gus Steves, Martina Shea, and Kristen O'Clair, against. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Carrasco Jr. with a favorable recommendation to council to approve FY 2016 School Budget in the amount of $25,537,820, plus any positive changes occurring in the overall budget will be transferred to the school budget. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, six to nothing. AV was absent for vote. And I don't think this is correct.
That was actually a five to one vote.
Yeah, Kristen O'Clair was opposed to that vote, so that is not accurate. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Carrasco Jr. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, six to nothing. I adjourned the meeting at 9:33 PM. Respectfully submitted, Evelyn Rivera, Recording Clerk.
Thank you. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. If we could just make a correction, I was late to that meeting, so if you could just make note to that, that I didn't arrive until 7:30. And also a question, I think this was brought up before, with the people voting for their names, these are just letters, they're not the full names, and that was brought up before, there could be some confusion. So I believe we should be having, I know, I know what SM is, I know what EC is, but other people looking at these real quick may not know who that is, so it really should be clear, the full names. Thank you.
I would just also note, an agenda item number four, towards the end it notes that Ms. Stanton said that if the increase is not supported, approximately 14 positions will be lost. Those would not be positions that are currently existing, these are positions that are being proposed.
Right.
So these are not positions being eliminated or cut, these are just positions that would not be created.
And I-
Very good.
Did, did you have a question?
No, he just had an add.
Oh, okay.
Are you going to have a hand up?
Just go ahead.
Okay. Since there was some confusion about the, the motion at the end of the meeting, and I think some committee members weren't really sure, like, what the final amount was going to be, I'm actually interested in holding another general, I'm sorry, EHS Subcommittee before we have the final budget meeting at the end of the month, and I'll let you guys know closer to the time when we have a date.
Okay, thank you. She will, she's going to schedule another EHS meeting before the budget is voted on?
And what are we going to-
Just to help with clarification and confusion and final numbers and so forth.
We don't have a final set school budget number because of the way the motion was constructed. That, this was after you left the meeting.
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
That's right, we don't have a final, because we don't know what you're going to add.
Correct.
Okay.
D, Planning and Development, Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. A meeting of the Plan and Development Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, April 28th, 2015, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Subcommittee Members Counselor Steves, Counselor Estrada, Counselor Moriarty, Ex officio, Counselor Carrasco Jr., Ex officio, and Citizen Members Evelyn Petrelli and Wallace McKenzie. Also in attendance were Counselor Clements, Town Manager Kevin Pecos, and Cassandra Ackley. I called the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Agenda item number one, vote to recommend the appointment of Richard Pallone of Southbridge to McCann Fields and Park Improvements Committee, effective immediately through December 31st, 2016, and to submit to council for ratification. Mrs. Ackley said this candidate has been attending meetings regularly, excuse me. Counselor Moriarty said he is an active parent in Little League and is very knowledgeable. A motion was made by Counselor Estrada and seconded by Counselor Steves with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the appointment of Richard Pallone to the McCann Fields and Park Improvements Committee, effective immediately through December 31st, 2016. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, six to zero. Counselor Carrasco Jr. was absent for a vote. But he didn't really have to be there for the vote, so that should be clear too. Agenda item number two, vote to recommend the appointment of Alan Efremson of Southbridge as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term, effective immediately through June 30th, 2018, and submit to council for ratification. Mr. Pecos said Mr. Efremson is a member of the TROZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals, and would be a great asset. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Estrada with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the appointment of Alan Efremson as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term, effective immediately through June 30th, 2018. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, six to zero. Again, Counselor Carrasco, he came in late, so that's why he didn't vote. Agenda item number three, review and vote to approve fiscal year 2016 Economic and Development Budget. This is a fairly level-funded budget with grants paying the majority of the salaries. A motion was, a motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Steves with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the FY 2016 Economic and Development Budget of $60,034, which is a 25.69% decrease. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, seven to zero. Agenda item number four, vote and, review and vote to approve fiscal year 2016 Plan and Budget. Questions were asked about the difference of the Economic Development Director and the Planner. Mr. Pecos said the ED Director oversees the entire department and can concentrate on economic and community development. The Assistant Planner would concentrate on town planning. Mrs. Ackley said she is presently doing both jobs, but after her retirement, she will only be dedicated in doing planning work where the ED Director will have overall direction of the ED Department. A motion was made by Counselor Steves and seconded by Counselor Estrada with a favorable recommendation to approve, to, to send, this is, okay, I'm sorry, favorable recommendation to council to approve the FY 2016 Plan and Budget of $24,442, which is a 555.98% increase. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, seven to zero. A vote, a motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Steves, vote by a show of hands, all in favor, seven to zero. I adjourned the meeting at 6:33 PM. Respectfully submitted, Evelyn Rivera, Recording Clerk. I have no meetings set at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. E, Protection of First Nations Property, Counselor Carrasco.
No meetings, no, no minutes.
Thank you. F, Town Manager Search Committee?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to give an update. We will begin our interview process for our semifinalists this week, and also next week. We have two days scheduled for interviews with the Town Manager Search Committee.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, Chairman's Announcements. I only have two quick things. One is, and next, next meeting we'll get into it more, I'm sure, but on Memorial Day at 8:00 AM is when the annual Southbridge Memorial Day Parade will begin, and that, as always, will begin right up front of Town Hall and progress through each of the different war monuments in a loop, resulting, ending rather, back across the street next to the fire department with the World War I memorial. So that is Memorial Day at 8:00 AM, and hopefully as many people as possible can come out and show their gratitude. And secondly, the town manager certainly helped redeem himself in his, his athletic exploits with, with an impressive performance this past weekend in, in the inaugural softball for Southbridge event. We had an alumni game that was pretty well-attended and seemed to be a big hit, no pun intended, and then the town versus school game right afterwards, which was comedic at least, and it went off pretty well. Food Share I know left with several different bags of, of non-perishable food items. I still have several more bags that I have to get to them, and a little bit of money was raised for the middle high school booster club. And surprisingly, in a positive way, this is one of those events that the immediate feedback was, was strong and, and very positive, to the point that I know that night, three folks indicated that they wanted to see this happen again before the end of the summer. Couple more people said so later in the weekend, and Counselor Carrasco noted several of the alumni have also talked to him, encouraging something to happen as well. So we'll see about the viability of doing something and how we can make that work to, to build off that and do something, again, positive within the community. But just wanted to put that out there and thank all those who came out, especially those who gave time, the food, the money, et cetera, that helped out both Food Share and the Booster Club. And with that, agenda item number six is Town Manager's Announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick things. Just another reminder to the public that the Board of Health proposed fee increase, the subject of the Board of Health fee increase will be discussed at a public hearing Thursday, May 7th, at 7 o'clock, right here in these Town Council chambers. Secondly, there will be a beautified Southbridge Community Cleanup Day on May 16th, from 8:30 AM to 12:00 PM. Rain date is May 17th. This is to coincide with Earth Day, and folks who are interested in participating can meet right here at Town Hall down front, where they will be given trash collection bags, gloves, t-shirts, and snacks. And following the cleanup at noon, people will gather at the end of that to hopefully share some stories and, and their lunches together, so it looks like it'll be a fun day. And we'll be doing some hydrant flow testing at 217 Sturbridge Road, Route 20, on Wednesday, May 20th, 2015, at approximately 1:00 PM. The location tested will be 217 Sturbridge Road, Charlton, across from Juniper Hills Apartments. And as always, there will be issues with respect to the sediments being stirred up, that's why we do these flushings, and so people should be wary of that. And the last thing I wanted to say was to thank the chairman for organizing the softball game this weekend, on both a serious and a fun note. On a serious note, you know, these events do some good things for charity, but probably of equal importance is they bring together people in the community to share a sense of community. It was well-attended that night with the players and families and lots of folks who came, and a number of council members, and did my heart well to see a gentleman of such experience as Apple right out there on the softball field with the rest of us, and a number of councils as well. And as you mentioned, I did hit a homerun, the only one I've ever hit, so I think it might have been the best night of my life. My wife claimed she was there, that it was our wedding or the birth of our children, but that's because she's never hit a homerun, so she doesn't know what that feels like, so it was a great night, seriously. Thanks for organizing it, it was a lot of fun. And I hope I'll be around to play the next one if there's an opportunity.
All right, and I, and I just wanted to note too, hopefully the, the damage done to the manager's car was not too extensive. During the alumni game, somebody did hit-
It was amazing.
-just an absolute bomb that, that smashed into the manager's vehicle.
And I had just moved it so that it wouldn't get hit. It gets it.
Good judgment. Moving on to swearing in and presentations, we don't usually take kindly to Webster residence here, but in this case, we will make an exception, and we will invite State Senator Ryan Fatman to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the members. Mr. Administrator, thank you for allowing me to crash your party from the town of Webster, my new home. Spent most of my life in the town of Sutton, and after my wife and I got married, we actually moved over to School Street in the town of Webster. I wanted to take a few minutes just to introduce myself to members of the council. I've been trying to do this over the course of the last four months that I've taken office since January, and had a little bit of a problem, and not so much of an assist with all the snow that we had fall, and had numerous meetings canceled along the way, so trying to make up for that before the budget, which we take up on May 18th through the 23rd. But it's a great honor for me to serve as your state senator. You can imagine, growing up with the last name Fatman, I got called a lot of things. And some of the greatest things, I've ever had the privilege of being called, or son, brother, husband, and now it's a great honor for me to be called senator. It's a serious, serious commitment that I take very sincerely and am very committed to. I've had the pleasure of serving as a local official, very much like yourselves, served six years on the Board of Slackman in my hometown of Sutton, and served two terms in the House of Representatives. And I think, as a general statement, for the first time, despite some still difficult budgetary circumstances, I think the state's financial ship is starting to get better. You know, just to put some things into perspective, as we were leaving last fiscal, or this fiscal year, but also leaving sort of the last session, we had to cut $325 million from the state budget in revenues and overspending. And so those were nine-seed by Governor Patrick, and when the new governor came in in January, we realized there was about a $756 million deficit and had to do additional cuts. Also, which was sort of unfortunate, was that there's a $1.8 billion budget deficit built in FY 16, which had to be balanced. And one of the debates that we just undertook recently, in order to make that happen, was an early retirement bill that's scheduled to save the state about $178 million, without having to lay off people in state government jeopardizing potentially services. There was a lot of debate back and forth about the extent of that program, if it would reach into the municipal level. It did not, but it was signed into law today by the governor, and those savings will be realized. If you take a look at the local budget, I'm a big believer that over the last 12 years, the state budget really hasn't concentrated on investing back in municipalities the way it should. There's been a lot of difficult times. We went through a tough recession that had a lot of local aid cuts attached to it in 2003, 2004, and also the economic sort of collapse and, and problems that we had in 2008, 2009. And it seems like local service money had been taken on the chin. You know, for the first time in fiscal year 2010, the UGGA funds, unrestricted government general aid, actually started increasing, but if you look at most communities that I represent, some communities are still down over a million dollars, and that to me is unacceptable. But the good news is, I think we're heading in the right direction with reinvesting in local communities. As you are probably familiar, the governor and lieutenant governor sat exactly where we all sit or sat in local government and know the importance of those town services. We saw for the town of Southbridge, you know, about $100,000 plus $120,000 that is going to be coming back in the unrestricted general government aid in this year's budget, and about $560,000 in school aid and Chapter 70 money. In addition to that, the governor had released about $400,000, $440,000 to the town of Southbridge in Chapter 90 money that was previously being withheld, and I think that those are all positive developments here on the local level. You know, for me legislatively, one of the things that I'm concentrating on very, very specifically and sort of calculated is that energy costs. We've received a tremendous amount of feedback over the course of the last few months about people's electricity bill. My wife and I, in November and December, were sort of shocked when we looked at our own, and were even more shocked as we went into January and February. And so I had asked to be put on the telecommunications, utilities, and energy committee for this session. I serve on seven others as well, but that to me is incredibly important one, partially because it affects everybody, and it affects just about everything we do, whether you be an individual who owns a home or is renting. You've seen your bills go up. If you're a business, you're paying more in energy costs, and that money could otherwise be going to hire people. And if you're a municipality, and many of the housing authorities have had this problem, you have electric heat, you've seen a vast majority of these budgets increase, taking money away from otherwise what would be services. And so to me, this is a major policy agenda that's going to be on my radar for the next two years. Lastly, I would just say it's been an honor to kind of get around the town of Southbridge in the last few months. I've had the privilege of joining with some of the counselors, going up to Southbridge Municipal Airport, looking at what that potentially could be for the state, which I think is fantastic. I've been to the hospital, and I've actually joined the Community Relations Board. We had our first meeting back on President's Day, and got to meet a lot of the people on the board, and really excited about that. Think Southbridge has, you know, great- Think Southbridge has, you know, great amenities, both to, you know, build its future and its economy. And on Thursday, I'm going to be here participating with the seniors about law enforcement and safety measures and items such as that. But I wanted to take a few minutes to introduce myself. I'm very happy to be here. I'm happy to come back whenever you would like me to. We'll be hosting office hours soon in the town of Southbridge, which will be posted in the Southbridge Evening Times. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Manon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Senator Fatman. You speak about the energy bills and the costs going up. When you're on this committee, I ask that you look at the communities that own their own electric companies. I work in Chicopee, and once a month for the past three or four months, the Chicopee Electric Light, they come in to read their meters. And I always ask, "Have your rates gone up yet?" And they tell me no. And I'm like, "Well, that's funny." Mine did, National Grid. So if you could just look, because we were told when National Grid was standing at that very podium, they told us that all energy is going up. And the Chicopee Electric Light, it didn't. I know they're their own entity, but if the gas was going up and everybody's electric was going up because of that, then they should have been affected too, and they weren't. So if you could just look at the municipalities that own their own and on their own electric service, I would greatly appreciate that.
Sure, sure. One thing just to note briefly is that natural gas prices around the country have fallen, and the only place they have not is New England. And part of that is a capacity issue with bringing in natural gas. We're a state that, in our region, is heavily dependent upon natural gas as an energy source. We've made great strides in renewable energies. We're number one in the nation for four years, and that's a great thing with regard to hydroelectric, solar, and wind. But, you know, there's a, in the industry and with activists who I met with today in the State House, there's a general acknowledgement that we need to do better. And part of that has to do with bringing in alternative types of fuels and also increasing natural gas capacity as well. So I will definitely take a look at that, and I just wanted to mention those things as an aside.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vecchia.
Very nice to meet you. When you mentioned Chapter 70 funds, you stated $560,000?
Approximately, in the House version of the budget.
That we're going to get $560,000 extra?
Yes.
Okay.
Approximately. Could be a few thousand off. It's around that range.
Okay. Two things. I know from sitting here in 2002, when I was chairman of education, like a millionaire is today, we got $1.9 million extra that year. And the councils that were sitting up here tried to keep the money themselves. They didn't want to give it to the schools. But saying that, that $560,000 through the chairman to the town manager, have you figured that money in to the budget?
Yes, it's in there.
$560,000? You figured in exactly $560,000?
Yes. We took 100% of the governor's budget and the House budget, which were identical. And we took 75% of UGGA pending the Senate budget.
One thing just to add, if I may?
Good job. Very good job.
There was, as part of the governor's budget, and rightfully so, I think he got some heat for this. He had cut the education, the kindergarten grant. And so that was a significant impact on a lot of the towns that I represent. I believe it also impacted the town of Southbridge. And it has now been reinstated, $261 million statewide. And so one of the things that I pointed out that I don't think was realized at the time when it was cut is that the Chapter 70 money is distributed on a formula. The block grant for kindergarten is not. So when those monies are cut, it's usually a significantly more amount of money. So I'm very happy that we got that back in there. I had to sit down as a sort of a rite of passage with the chairwoman of Ways and Means, a woman named Karen Spilka. We did this in the House of Representatives as well. Give your top three line items in the budget that are most important. And my top three were mostly regarding education funding on the municipal accounts. Number one was the kindergarten block grants. Number two, Chapter 70. Number three, ELL, English Language Learner reimbursement. There's been this problem in reimbursement, because in October 1st, they basically shut down the reimbursement until the next fiscal year. And for a lot of school districts that see children that come in after that, they don't get reimbursed for those costs. And we only get 48 cents on the dollar, even with getting reimbursed, pretty much. So what I'd like to see is more of a circuit breaker type funding, similar to special education, where 75% of those costs are reimbursed. I would love to see 100, but I also live in reality and, you know, kind of don't think that that would probably happen right away. But I think moving to 75% is a good start. The other thing is, there should be reimbursement after that October 1st date as a circuit breaker to protect the cities and municipalities and towns that are seeing this problem happen throughout the Commonwealth.
All right. Just two points. The kindergarten was $93,000 because we were fighting for it, and yourself and Mr. Durant. You did a very good job. We appreciate it. But we're going to try and find the money. And the second thing is, I'm proud of the town manager tonight saying that he's going to take that $560,000 and put it through the schools. Because past town managers and past council chairmen didn't give the school back all the money. They took cuts for themselves, gave it to fire, gave it to police. So I'm very proud of you tonight. Thank you very much, and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Steves?
Actually, I just wanted to dovetail on something that Commissioner Manon actually said, because I was thinking along the same lines as she was about municipal energy. And I was hoping, I don't know where things stand on this bill, but I remember a couple of years ago, there was a bill out there that would have made it easier to create energy co-ops and municipal energy projects like that. Do you have any idea where that stands? And is there any way to get, to push something like that forward?
Yeah, I think so. I think it's a pretty decent idea. And I would say, I don't know the specifics of where it stands, but I will look into that. And I know you have my email. And if you could just email me the specifics, that would be fantastic, and we'll get back to you quickly.
Mr. Pecos.
Senator, I just met tonight, and again, nice to meet you, and off of my congratulations.
Thanks.
A word of thanks. In the past, very often when state deficits are announced, Chapter 70, other forms of local aid are the very first thing that get targeted, and the cities and towns suffer badly. You folks up on Beacon Hill this year are making substantial cuts, but you did not take a penny from the cities and towns. And if you did, it's in accounts that didn't affect Southbridge. So most importantly, Chapter 70 and UGGA, as you've mentioned. So thank you for that. And the fact that we now have a governor, lieutenant governor, who both served in local government, and I didn't realize you had as well, probably is a significant indicator of, you know, they understand the importance of making sure that broad-based tax money gets down to the cities and towns. As the budget goes forward, we have included in the town's balance budget the governor's recommendation in House One, and also the corroborating vote that the House took on the budget. I know the budget is now in the Senate's court, and we are very hopeful that you folks will sustain at least those levels. So that as the budget goes forward to the inevitable conference committee and goodness knows what time, that, you know, we'll get good news that we used 100%, as I reported, 100% of the Chapter 70 increase in our estimated revenue and 75% of the UGGA increase. If at some point you feel confident that the UGGA money will be approved as recommended by the governor in the House, it would be wonderful if you were able to let us know that, because we could then put it in the revenue forecast, and that would immediately result in at least my recommendation to the council, and consistent with the EHS Subcommittee's recommendation to move that money over to the school department. As it currently stands, they have a substantial budget shortfall, and that would give them at least another $100,000 to deal with that.
Sure.
Final point. You folks took a vote, when I say you folks, I mean, everybody on Beacon Hill, House, Senate, governor, took a vote to provide the GIC that ensures all state employees $190 million to close the deficit that the GIC had rolled up over a series of years. As you know, that deficit was a direct result of the GIC not increasing for three years, premium contributions by state and local employees. And about 60 or 70-odd cities and towns are in the GIC now. Southbridge is not one of them. So they didn't increase premiums to the employees. They didn't increase co-pays or deductibles for three consecutive years. Meantime, they were bringing a lot of cities and towns into the pool under the new municipal health reform law, who had very bad claims experience. And we know that, because as they came into the GIC, they saved money. And so observers of this knew that the GIC was poisoning the risk pool, as we call it. And it would be an inevitable meltdown. There was absolutely, positively, no doubt about that. In fact, I personally brought it to Dolores Mitchell, the director of the GIC's, attention two years ago at a conference. And she kind of denied that, and now we're seeing it's exactly what everybody knew. When the legislature voted the $190 million to bail the GIC out, and I realize it wasn't something that you created, it wasn't something the governor created, but you've provided a very substantial subsidy to those 60 or 70 cities and towns that are in the GIC. To get a little more specific, and only because I have access to some numbers, Waymouth, my way of example, probably got somewhere around an $800,000 gift from the legislature, which, had it been in the form of sending all the members a bill for that $190 million, Waymouth would have had to come up with it.
Right.
Now, those 60 or 70-odd cities and towns got their share of that $190 million. Massive dollars flowed to those select 60 or 70 cities or towns. Southbridge did not get dime one, nor did any other city and town that is not in the GIC. For the last three years, while the GIC was not raising premiums and not increasing deductibles and co-pays, Southbridge was. And so was all the other 350 cities and towns, minus the 60 or 70 in the GIC. So while we had to foot the bill for the three years of rising healthcare costs, member communities in the GIC didn't. And I called the MMA's Fiscal Policy Analyst, analyst, John Robertson, the day after it happened, and raised my voice in outrage, because to give those 60 or 70 cities and towns their share of $190 million, and the rest of us get nothing, when we did the right thing, is outrageous. It is just outrageous. I recognize that sending them the bill for their $190 million share of this, the share of the $190 million, is not practical politically. I get that. But on the other hand, I hope up on Beacon Hill that it's recognized that this was done to the detriment of all the other cities and towns who've been paying their share. And that as we go forward in the future, that the members of the GIC are forced to pay the cost of their health insurance. As it stands right now, the package of co-pays, deductibles, and the approximate 7% rate increase is actuarially estimated to raise about 70 million of the cumulative $190 million deficit, which going forward is still there. So the package they put into place on July 1 is still inadequate. And on July 1 of next year, if they don't do more reform at the GIC, then they will most assuredly begin to roll up another deficit, which the taxpayers will have to pay for, to the detriment of the non-GIC members. I hope your office keeps an eye on this, and all other senators and reps do. I know the governor will, because he ran Harvard Pilgrim for a number of years and understands the issue. But I bring this up, because I think it was grossly unfair to the cities and towns that aren't GIC members. Although I understand the practicality, the governor was wiping out a problem from prior to his administration. So just raise the point.
Yeah, it's much appreciated. You know, I think part of this is not very ideological. The step back, what I'll say is, you know, Governor Romney and Governor Patrick had very similar governing philosophies when it came to state and local government. And so I think that state government actually worked a little bit better under both of them. The accounts saw more funds flowing, and I think that local governments kind of took it on the chin under both. And I think that there's going to be a shift over the next four years. And I think that part of that shift will be exactly what you're talking about in healthcare, because obviously, the governor, as you mentioned, has been a healthcare executive, but also the Secretary of Health and Human Services for, I believe, four years. And so it's definitely something that's noted.
I hope at the very least, the governor considers replacing the executive director of the GIC, Doris Mitchell, because frankly, to not raise premium, to not raise co-pays and deductibles, and to end the taxpayers' $190 million bill, which is rightfully the ownership of the employees that are insured by that plan, is absolutely gross mismanagement and outrageous, and she should be fired and replaced, plain and simple.
Yeah. Yeah. I would say that there's probably going to be a lot of changes.
I'm fairly plainspoken.
Any other questions for Senator Fatman or comments? Commissioner Strata?
Good evening, Senator. Welcome to the Southbridge.
Thank you.
One question for, in your budget, how much money to the Southbridge for sports?
Sorry, for what?
In your budget for Southbridge, how much money to the sport for sports?
Specifically, how much money is in the state budget? For, I would defer to probably the town. There probably wouldn't be any. You know, if there's something out there that needs to be filed as an amendment, that, I don't believe Representative Durant mentioned anything to me about that he did specifically for the town of Southbridge. I know we have a spreadsheet. Is there a suggestion that you would like to make?
All right. Okay. So if, once Commissioner Strata has the suggestion, he can forward it to your office, I'm sure.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'd like to thank you for your time and coming out, and look forward to many positive results.
Thank you. And I would typically stick around, but my town of Webster's calling, because I've got to go vote before 8:00, and I don't know if I'm going to make it. But I'm going to do my best. Good luck.
Ten minutes. All right. Thank you.
Can you put in a good word, put the Southbridge Police on me?
Depends which one you ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will invite any residents who'd like to come forward to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. If you come up, just state your name, address, and you'll have five minutes to speak on that topic.
Steve DeMers, 25 Hotwell Terrace in Southbridge. And it's not normal that I would come to two meetings in a row to address the council. I felt the need to come here tonight to address the council because of the closing statements of the town manager. The first way to solve a problem is to admit that you have one. And I don't think that you're...
Could you speak a little louder?
I'm sorry. I don't think that you want to admit that we do have a problem. The second thing I'd like to say tonight, and I'm going to be real quick, is I want to apologize to any of the patrolmen in Southbridge, who, many of them who I may have worked with in the past in Little League in Pawwana that I may have offended here last week. I wasn't mentioning the things I was mentioning for the patrolmen, the guy that was running the streets. I was mentioning the things to the higher-ups. Those, most of the patrolmen that you have running the streets, less than five years' experience, less than five years in this town. Most of you councilors got to realize that we had a mass exodus of police officers in the last five years that retired, and some who actually left town. Okay? I didn't mean no harm to any of them. My problem is, is it seems to me as the town manager and the chief of police don't get together, and he's not well-informed on what's going on in town, just by the fact that, of one fact that he said, "I don't think this," on the last meeting, at the very end, if you go to it and you look at, "I don't think there's 300 cars in the town of Southbridge." That's what he said. That's what he said at the end of the meeting. "Do you think there's 300 cars in the town of Southbridge?" Okay? Then he said, "I don't think there's 300 houses." He may have been mistaken. But that's it. That's all I got to say. I wanted to apologize to some of the patrolmen, who I may have hurt their feelings. But as far as, and I can't even, Chief, Mr. Sherratt, those, the leadership is not there. And it hasn't been there for the 12 years that this guy has been on office. And when he was getting put on office, when he was getting appointed to the office of chief, I came up here and I spoke then that he was not the right man for the job. chief, I came up here and I spoke then that he was not the right man for the job. And all he does is sit at his desk and does nothing. He cares nothing about Southbridge. And I can prove it. I grew up with the guy. I know him. I know inside of his head. He may not think so, but I do.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Personal comments about the performance or lack thereof of town employees cannot, absolutely must not be allowed in a public meeting. There is a process if somebody wants to be critical of a town employee, which basically involves putting a letter together and submitting it to the town manager's office. But to allow that conversation to go on here in public without the employee being advised of it and able to defend themselves from those charges is a violation of the council's own regulations with respect to employees. It is also a violation of the open meeting law, which allows every employee to be present when somebody's going to say something critical or detrimental to their professional or personal character. And this is being done right now, and it needs to stop immediately. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I will note, Mr. Demers, that what you can do is, if you have issues with policies in particular, that's something that's certainly fair game. For better or worse, public officials are obviously fair game. But in terms of personnel, you know, when it comes to budget items and that sort of thing that are not necessarily, you know, they can sometimes indirectly be, but you know, there's certain things there, but in general, any sort of personnel discussion is...
I do, I do understand, Mr. Chairman. And again, I find myself apologizing for what I've done. I have a question for you, just one question for you through the, through you, to the, to the town manager. How often does the town manager meet with the police chief?
I speak with him several times a day, meet with him probably four or five times a week, have a cup of coffee with him tomorrow morning at 9:00, so it's pretty constant. I talk to him weekends, weeknights.
Okay. I'm just curious because it just seemed to me that you were ill-informed of what was going on in town, and I was wondering if it was the messages were getting passed to you of just what was happening. I did bring a list of papers up here of people that I went to their homes and stuff and talked to and got names and addresses. I didn't get quite the 300 that I wanted. I did get a substantial amount, over 200, okay? But I was told, "It's wasting my time. It's your job to find these things out. It's not for me to presentate them to you. You are the lead official of the town. You should know what's going on in the town." And you should...
He's out of order. He can't, he's insulting the town manager.
I'm sorry?
He can't insult the town manager. He's out of order.
Okay.
I'm not insulting him, I'm making a statement.
Ultimately, there's...
It's definitely a statement.
Right. So ultimately, to an extent, the manager gets to, is to an extent, certain fair game there. However, I think, I would, I would just suggest, you know, you have a minute left anyway, so I would just wrap it up.
I'll end my conversation here because I just don't feel that it's going to go anywhere, any positive issues are going to come around it, but thank you for listening.
Are there any other residents who'd like to come forward to speak on an issue? Again, name and address, and you'll have five minutes, please.
Christopher Brer, 25 Hartwell Street, Southbridge. I just wanted to make a comment. I noticed that the river, and I don't know the names of the things in the town here, I've been here five years, but the river's been drained, which I think is a wonderful thing, but there's a lot of materials in there and things, and I know Arbor Day's coming, you had mentioned that. And you know, I'd be the first one, or my wife would be the first one to drag me down and get in that river and pull stuff out. I was just wondering if there was some kind of something going on while that river's low that would help to clean the environment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, or if you haven't even thought of that, number one. Number two, I do have out in front of my house, a, where the, there's the gas line, which they put tile around, and now the gas line's up in the air. And then there is a sidewalk, in particular, I'm concerned about not just my house, but other houses, where if you walk down the street, you'll see the water line, the water main cover, and then that sidewalk's all chewed up. So I'm just concerned about that sometime going to be ripping apart or opening up. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. That's on streets. And I don't know where we've gone with, I know we just did the town sidewalks, but where are we going with that?
Mr. Brer, where is that sidewalk particularly, or specifically, I should say?
Mine is 25 Hartwell. You'll see both those items there. One was done by the gas company when they came through. They threw tile over the gas pipe. And then the sidewalk has been broken since I've moved in here with my wife about five years ago.
And was that Hartwell Street or Hartwell Terrace?
Hartwell Street.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
And then if you go up the street, you'll see off of, I believe it's the Hind property there, you'll see their water main line, you'll see crack in that sidewalk, and I believe the one below there too. So just a little curiosity there. The houses aren't exactly 20 years old, they're 1880, 1890. Thank you.
If you'd be kind enough to call the office in the morning and leave your phone number, I don't want to ask you to do that publicly, we will check that, and I will personally call you back and let you know what we find out, or meet you out there, look at it, whatever you'd like.
Outstanding. I appreciate it. And the water, the river.
On the river, right. So we can check on that as well. Are there any other residents at this point who'd like to come forward? Name an address if so.
Good evening, council, town manager, Pecos, Kevin Buxton, 28 Columbus Avenue. 'Tis the season for budgets and revenue, and I come before the council today to, tonight to speak on some of the revenue concerns we have going forward with landfill royalties. Presently pending is the Favored Nation Review, which I'm sure we're all hoping to hear favorable word back that our royalties will be going up. In light of when that, when the Favored Nation Review is done and it can become public, we are also presently going through a revenue stress because of the lifespan of the landfill. I haven't heard any direct date as far as the life of the landfill, but whispered is somewhere about two years, could possibly be a closure of the landfill. This has a major effect on the town's budget. As Counselor Pellquinn mentioned, about $600,000 supports the Board of Health Department. And the, like I said, as far as the revenue that's generated has a drastic effect on the town hall. Actually, the impact to the residents won't be felt till 2027. If the landfill closes in 2017, we'll still receive 10 years of free trash pickup. Now, nobody wants to see the landfill close on the town side because those, that $2 million in revenue, approximate $2 million in revenue, even if you bump it up to 2 and 1/2 million, it's still 5% of the overall budget. But those, let's say $2 million, if status quo with the budget stays, then that $2 million would have to come from the taxpayers. So I can understand that the operator wants the revenue stream to continue, the town wants the revenue stream to continue. But unless there's something in it for the residents, we're left out of the picture. At the NEPA meeting, quick response, I haven't had a chance to complete reviewing the perimeter berm that they're proposing. They're looking at a couple of little additions that could extend the landfill another three years, and then they're looking at a massive expansion into the McIntyre property, which would give another 11 years. Like I said, I haven't had a chance to totally review that. But moving forward, extending the landfill an extra three years might be presentable. We're also in the process of going into a brand-new town manager, and these items are going to be hitting him square and knocking on his door when he first sits down in that office. It's concern of mine because until our town manager gets, comes up to speed, it's our nine councilors, our representatives, who are going to be looking out for what's best for the taxpayers and the residents of Southbridge. I appreciate your time. And one final note, I really would like us to review the idea of having subcommittee meetings televised because when a report comes up, all the chair would have to do is say, "You can catch the subcommittee meeting on the access channel. Here are the votes we took. You don't need to get into the discussions. If somebody wants to hear the discussions, it's there readily." And it would also give people a chance to actually review the entire meeting and not just bullet point minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other residents who'd like to come forward to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda? And again, just a name and address in five minutes.
My name is Minus D. Bad singer, 28 Main Street, Southbridge. You people, what do you know tonight? Things had changed in the last year to mend it way for the better. People out walking the streets without fear. I don't know what you died to doing, but you're doing a tremendous job. We're getting Southbridge back the way it used to be. We're getting more jobs. With people getting more respect. I'm not adding a town to the way boys or girls love in our town. That will alleviate more jobs, more stairs, and the children would have more insensitivity than the negativity of the dead. And I would have made it if each and every one of us had looked into that within the next few years. When they'll die children, future and future generations around us. I know many of you think that I'm a joke. But I didn't go to school like you died then. I went on the streets, was beaten out of childish hands, and being humiliated like I am today, not by you people, by the town. But I'm not giving up on negativity and positivity if you ain't never felt right. Not to use one another. We're together as a community. The reason is getting everyone better. But with the town manager, I'd like to bring to your attention that rotary is a dead trap. At night, they race around. And whatever your grandchild is watching at that rotary, you know what I'm saying? They remember. People, and I'm going to say it very over TV, people drive out of my yard, and they turn in a salvage. They drink and drive. I went to the salvage brewery, they didn't, it was like all day, but I went to the same place, and they said, "Well, look into it. We need to buckle down." Like they don't manage a year ago. You can't cure it, but you can cure it. Did you not say that? The town manager, I am very proud to say that I don't know what you're doing by nothing, but the reason is a lot better. There's more people over. There's more of that than I've seen in the last two months than there has been in a year. You people are saving children in that town from drugs alone. Yes, many children know. Save the, it's a serious issue for Southbridge. I'm asking you all, please, without a father, man, and salvage, they're not doing nothing. If we could build a voice and build love for our children. Thank you very much. Good night, God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, Mr. Berset. Are there any other residents who'd like to come forward to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Once, twice, sold. Move on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Vote to confirm the appointment of Richard Pallone of Southbridge to the McCann Fields and Park Improvements Committee, effective immediately through December 31, 2016.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellquinn?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Crossco?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 10. Vote to confirm the appointment of Alan Efferson of Southbridge as an alternate to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term, effective immediately through June 30, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellquinn?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Crossco?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. And finally, Agenda Item Number 11, Councilors' Forum, and tonight we'll start with Counselor Estrada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I want to thank you from my friend, Counselor Apple, Steve, Tom, Mayor Pecos, chairman by chairman, and Chairman Monique for taking your time for the, and other, other members of the town hall for the, for the, all the bus game. We have everything, and we have a fun. My first given softball in a long time. You noticed. Good, good moment for me, and I liked it. It's a great couch to repeat, different time. Please, the next time, I'm playing basketball, my easy for me. Thank you, and I'll bless you all, citizens.
Thank you. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just a couple things. I wanted to touch on the softball. I had a phenomenal time, and it was all for good cause. Everybody did get together, and we all enjoyed ourselves, even though the school side stole four of our best guys. And that's the only reason why they won, was because they got four of our best people. But all in all, it was good. Kevin Pecos, our town manager, he hit the first homerun. And then after that, Counselor Moriarty got up to pitch his first inning, and the school department scored 20. So...
I gave up plenty of homeruns.
But I did manage to hit two first base, and that was very exciting for me because I too have not played softball since I was a child. So I did enjoy myself very much, and it was for a good cause. It was nice seeing all the councilors that were able to get together, get together with the school employees and town employees and whatnot. Okay. On that note, I'll go on to our sidewalks and our Main Street, not being a dumping place for trash. We have on our sidewalk, in front of the Southbridge Credit Union, a queen-size mattress. Now, unless somebody's keeping house at the Southbridge Credit Union, somebody just decided to dump their mattress right on Main Street. So if you could get in touch with somebody about that. I mean, I usually complain about little things, people throwing trash out of their car, you know, or cigarette butts or something, but this is a full-blown queen-size mattress. And it still has pattern and sheets on it too, so, you know, maybe we can use the cameras at the Southbridge Credit Union, maybe there's something out there, maybe you can see who dumped it off or something, maybe they have some footage on that. That would be great. And also in your notes, it talks about the, in regards to the PPP meeting that was canceled and the police officers. Where are we on that?
We've completed the review of the budget, and there is funding sufficient to hire two new police officers right away, and a third one probably fairly soon. We're just waiting. We have three retirements pending. Currently, one will occur on, about July 1. The other two will take a little longer. So I'm reviewing the resumes and expect to appoint two officers and relay that to the PPP. And I may appoint the third one provisionally, which means they're, they are appointed, they are in fact appointed, and we can begin shopping for an academy for them. But they don't get paid until they go to the academy, so that should be all, I hope, completed this week, put into a memo and sent to the PPP committee.
That would be wonderful. Thank you very much, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pellquinn?
I have to say, everybody else talking about it is making me really sad that I wasn't able to make the softball game. It sounds like you all had a great time. But no, there's nothing for me tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Steves? Councilor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had one quick thing, and that's to dovetail with the fact that we were playing a game to raise some funds for Food Share. This is on Saturday, May 9th. The postal carriers around the nation are going to be collecting food for various, for the food pantries and the various other organizations that raise food. I think it's specifically for the county, for county food banks. And that's May 9th, so if you have a bag of food and whatnot, cans, preferably, obviously they have to be still valid, not out-of-date ones. No glass containers, good cans, good boxes of cereal, stuff like that, rice, those kinds of things, things that'll last a while. And leave them out by your mailboxes so that carriers can pick them up. They'll, will be going around and doing those kinds of things. I actually happen to be one, so, I know, I expect to be carrying a whole bunch of big cans and stuff around, and I probably will rue saying this right now, but when that date comes, but it'll be worth it, so. And that's all I really had. Oh, actually, I do have one more question. Mr., through you to the manager, where do things stand as far as finding a permanent DPW director?
We're going to advertise again. It'll either be this week or next week. Depends on the timing of the publications, because the Beacon and APWA, American Public Works Association journals come out once a month, so you've got to catch their scheduling. And those are the two key places to advertise, because if you put it in the local paper, obviously, you know, nobody sees that of all the directors in the state. So we're going to get it out this week, and the timing, you know, depends when those publications come out, when I'll close the application deadline. And hopefully, we'll get somebody that's suitable this time.
And also, is there, has the plan been designed yet for this year for road paving and repairs?
Is that what I'm saying?
Has the plan been set up this year for this year's road paving and repairs and for road paving and other roadwork?
Is there, I'm sorry to say, is there a...
Has this year's roadwork been planned yet? What's...
Oh, for the year?
Yeah.
Probably not, because we're right in the middle of doing the capital budget right now, and that just came right on the heels of the operating budget. So, once those, once the capital budget's done, and I actually put most everything into the computer this morning, all the requests, I've still got, I've got a bunch of requests from the DPW right here to put in. And then Karen and I will meet sometime this week, start figuring out a funding plan. Once that gets done, then I think we'll probably turn our sights back to the pavement management plan, and hopefully come in here, maybe on the 18th. Heather can be prepared to give you a presentation. It won't, it won't say, "Here's the streets we're going to pave," it'll say, you know, "Here's the general condition of the roads in town," and it's a pretty interesting report, I've seen it. Presentation is already, the engineer we had part-time wrote it. But it's like 40 or 50 PowerPoint slides long. And if you, if you think my PowerPoint presentations are bad, this one will completely zone you out, because it's engineering talk. So I'm trying to get that distilled, but I just haven't had time. I'm trying to get it down to 10 or 15 slides that we could give you, but I've had no time to do that. If the council would like a copy of the, of the uncondensed version, I can give you a copy, and you can read it, you know, at your leisure. Happy to do that. I don't think I've got it electronically, so we'll just hard copy it and put it in your packages.
Counselor? Counselor Vecchia?
Through the chairman to the town manager, I've gotten several calls, and when I mean several calls, I've gotten over 10 calls on the budget item where you reduced a pay grade for an employee. Wait a minute, I want to talk, okay? I know it might be a personal matter, but I'm looking at the minutes and stated here that the town manager would speak to the employee. Well, I've been told you haven't talked to the employee. And I noticed in the same budget, Heather Blakely's title's been changed, and she's getting a $12,000 increase. To a lot of people who called me up, Mr. Town Manager, they stated to me, "It looks like we're borrowing from Peter to pay Paul from of governing." And there's a lot of support, council support, to increase that employee back to what that person was making. So I don't want to hop on it too much, but I would like a small explanation, just a small explanation here, okay? I know you don't want to state too much, because you're telling me it's a personal matter, but nobody's talked to the person, and we do, and our form of governing, when you want to increase somebody, you have to bring it through us, that's the full council. Now, when you want to decrease somebody, we should get an explanation, okay? And I've, honest to God, I've gotten several calls, many, many calls on this, and I've talked to a few councilors, and they're in agreement that they don't think it's fair. So I just want to clear the air. So could you just give me a small explanation, please?
Sure. It has nothing to do with the person involved, so we can talk about it openly. At the Public Works Committee Subcommittee Meeting, when I presented that budget, I did advise the Subcommittee that the grade for the employee concern was not justified, in my opinion. This was one of a number of regrades that I did, and I think the councilors were, I think there were five of them in total, so there are another, other employees affected, too. This is not the only employee.
I don't want to interrupt you. You're telling me you reduced four other people's pay?
That's correct.
Okay.
In fact, in order to do that, because the reduction in grade that I made, the grade didn't exist, I had to come to the council and ask you to vote to establish the grades so that I could do that. In this case, the reduction in grade, the grade already exists, so that was an administrative exercise. But I did give the DPW Subcommittee a complete explanation on that. There was actually some discussion from the employee involved, and the Subcommittee voted, I think unanimously, to support the budget, which included the downgrade.
And you feel that the person deserved the downgrade?
I don't, it's, again, it has nothing to do with the person.
But you're saying the job doesn't warrant...
The, correct. It was upgraded two years ago, I believe, and I think that that was an error in judgment to upgrade the position. I don't believe the, the upgrade is comparable to our executive assistant in our office. And I don't think there's justification in the DPW to have a position compensated that highly.
Okay. That's, that's a good answer. Two, I'm not trying to set any trouble, I'm just wanting, because I've gotten several calls, over 10 calls, honestly, okay? That list, you said you downgraded five people? Can I get that list later from you, Steve?
Yeah, it's actually...
So that you're not really picking on one person? That's going to prove that you're, there's not just one person.
There isn't a list, but let me put it this way. There were four recording clerical secretary positions, I think, as you all know. And what we did was we had four different pay rates for those four different people, and we regraded it in order to ensure that everybody was getting paid the correct amount. One employee...
I remember.
One employee went from $43 an hour to $19 an hour, and...
How much?
Fully, from $43 an hour to $19 an hour.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
And in addition to those four changes in the budget, which was originally proposed, there was the elimination of a clerical position with an actual person in it, and a reduction in hours of another employee, and a transfer in hours of a third employee. Now, that has since changed. We, with Budget Change Memo Number Three, I think it is, where we've downgraded the building commissioner's position instead of those clerical positions. But at the time that those downgrades were made, they were in existence. And I will assure the council, contrary to any rumors you may hear, to the contrary, that every single employee who was affected, I brought to my office and had a personal conversation, explained to them why these budget changes were being made, so that they would understand. All but one employee accepted that fully and did not raise any objection to it at all. I also want to assure the council that in the course of balancing a budget, with a parameter, you know, of not raising taxes, that's a, that's a very difficult challenge, and it is impossible to balance a budget without some effect on employee positions. It just cannot be done without it. So it's unfortunate, but, you know, you have that phenomenon where if you want me to balance the budget, and you want me to balance it without the taxes, then we're going to have to understand that some things are going to happen to employees, and those employees are not going to like it, and they're going to speak up to you.
Okay. Two questions. It doesn't really matter how much the budget was going to be. You felt you were going to downgrade this position anyways.
In point of fact, I was presented with some ideas where the DPW could be further reduced, and this position could be restored. The director brought that to me. The individual employee, I guess, had prepared that list based on some familiarity with the spending patterns. And my comment to the director was, "Oh, very good. I appreciate this. I will now cut the DPW budget in addition..."
Okay, I understand.
"...to the personnel reduction. I will cut all of these additional ideas, because I thought they were wonderful ideas, and they merited further reductions in the budget." The director asked me to please not do that, and I said, "You know, this isn't a switch-and-bait game. I don't make a decision about downgrading a position lightly, and when I make that decision and recommend it, it's because it's justified, in my opinion. And so if somebody comes along and says, 'Well, make the cuts over here instead,' my attitude is, 'Well, if we can make those cuts and save the taxpayers another $10,000, I'll cut those, too.'"
Okay.
"I'll cut both."
I understand.
But in this case, I didn't, because upon further reflection by the DPW director, when she looked at those cuts, she found that one of them included not watering the town playing fields. Now, I can't imagine for one second coming to here, to this council, and seriously saying to you, "Let's not water the town playing fields." Now, that would have saved you $10,000. That was the biggest and best and most money-saving idea on the list. And there's no way I would, I would propose that. Then the smaller ones didn't add up to a lot of money, so I frankly didn't pursue them.
Okay. She and I brought this item up, just like in the court of law. Either one of you want to speak on this? That's okay, because he brought, it was brought up, okay? Just to clear the air.
Turning it in to Agenda Item.
Right. Mr. Counselor Vecia, rather, it's really not, for better or worse, that's not really the way it's supposed to work. And it's really something that, that would have been more of a citizens' forum sort of thing, only because this isn't on the agenda.
I understand.
And ultimately, by basically bringing in a half dozen different angles and discussing and debating it, it's more or less kind of trying...
Well, then, don't let him speak.
In a, in a positive tone, I'm sure, trying to, almost like circumventing the open meeting law, so we can't really do it in that regard. And we've, we've had that with, I think, Mr. Cowett recent, not that long ago, who wanted to speak at this point, so...
Well, that's fine.
Just in terms of consistencies in the laws and so forth.
If it helps, Mr. Chairman and Counselor Vecia, the council will have an opportunity to talk about this again when you discuss the budget.
Oh, I understand that, but I just wanted to tell you to give this gentleman an explanation.
But just a cautionary note for the council. Under your charter, the manager has the exclusive authority to assign employees to grades.
I understand that.
The council cannot dictate to the manager...
I understand that, too.
...to take an employee and upgrade them.
I understand that.
If, if that, if you ever had that sort of a procedure, if you ever allowed that, then your whole system of government would be...
I'm not asking to do anything. I just, this gentleman wanted an explanation, that's all. If this isn't a proper time and place, that's fine with me.
I'm commenting, I'm commenting more on the idea of noting that councilors have received calls and having a discussion like this, and what I'm suggesting to the chair and to the council is that a discussion where the council tries to get into the appropriate grade of employees is a perilous journey for you, because we have 500 employees...
You misconstrue what I've tried to tell you. I'm fine with your explanation, okay? Just that this person wanted an explanation, that's all. You can give it to him in your office, okay?
That person already has an explanation in depth.
Oh, he does?
She, and yes.
This gentleman here?
Oh, this gentleman, I don't know.
Could I ask you something? Mr. Town Manager, could I come to your office at some point in time and have a sit-down with you, one face-to-face, man-to-man, and a couple of questions may be asked, as my town manager?
Sure, I'd be more than happy to.
Well, that's fine. That's all I wanted to do.
I'll make an appointment with your secretary.
Just call Yvonne and set it up whenever it's convenient for you. Happy to.
He's a taxpayer, and I got, I got, I'm telling you, I'm on the 10, 10 calls on this, all right? And if it's not the proper place, that's fine with me. Sometimes they allow it here, sometimes they haven't. I've been on this council many times. But that's fine if you don't want to, I understand. And I understand where you're coming from. I'm not telling you what you have to do. I think you're doing a great job. You cut that budget the way we wanted to. Just that it don't look that right, because you're giving the DPW Assistant Director a $12,000 raise, and you're cutting somebody. So a lot of people have been calling and telling me, "Well, it doesn't look right. It looks like you took the money from one person to give it to another." That's all. I don't agree with that. Listen, I don't agree with it. I don't agree with that. I, I understand you, but I get these calls, and I just wanted an explanation. This isn't the proper place and time. I understand that. Very good.
You're not on the DPW Subcommittee, are you, Apple?
No, I'm not.
And so the explanation was given there, and it will come to the entire council.
I understand in the budget, when we go for the budget, which is my next question. That is May 26th, but the school committee on Yvonne's list has a school committee meeting for that night.
Yeah, I already called the Superintendent of Schools and asked her to please very respectfully have the school committee meet in a different location that night, and she was very happy, said that wouldn't be a problem. But this is the council's chamber. And so when the council needs to meet, the council does have priority.
I agree with you. But I just wanted to say, somebody wanted to clear the air. I'm not, I'm not at all telling you what to do. And I think you did a great job. You cut that budget the way we wanted it to, the majority, okay? So just that, there's a lot of talk in town, that's all. I wanted to clear the air. I don't see any problem. We're trying to clear the air, okay? But this isn't the right place? Fine.
Counselor?
Thank you.
Counselor Vandal?
Thank you. I've gotten numerous phone calls from people concerning the basketball court on Morris Street. They tell me that they're, they're staying there after dark, they put their headlights on, it's flashing in some of the people's houses, they don't like it, they're rowdy. And when they leave in the morning, they got bottles stuffed in the fence, okay? They stuff the bottles in the fence, and they, barrels are empty, trash is all over the place. And there's a couple people up there, they get out there and they clean it up. And I told them, "You don't have to do that, you know? You're doing it through the goodwill of you," you know? And, and they said, "No, no." And they said, I said, a couple of weeks ago, when this was brought to my attention, I said, "Well, what if we have a sign put up, 'No, no playing basketball after 9:00.'" And they said, and they said they're going to see if they can't get a sign. This was Heather Blakely. She says, "We'll see if we can get a sign put up there." And, you know, kind of, kind of curtail it. And, and no, no police supervision up there. You've got to have the police drive by, you know, keep your eyes...
This is on Water Street?
Morse. Water Street.
Morse?
Morse.
Oh, Morse, okay, gotcha. Just a question, but I know in the summertime, a lot of basketball courts in a lot of communities are open past 9:00, because a lot of the kids that play ball don't come out till 9:00 to play. And most communities want to encourage them to play, because if they don't have a place to do something constructive, then they might tend to do something not constructive. So, you know, certainly if it's the will of the council, if you want us to post at 9:00, you know, I will do that, but I would just caution you that, you know, this, this is a real pro and a con here, and I'm not sure, because I don't really know the community that well, so I don't know what, what you'd all like to say.
Well, the people up there like their, like their peace and quiet after 9:00, and, you know, with the, with the headlights flashing, it's not a good thing.
So they're not, this isn't a lit court?
No, and they don't want it lit up there either. They like their peace.
Ah, different thing. Gotcha.
Okay?
Yep.
That's all I have.
And we do have other courts that aren't lit at night, correct?
Not for basketball.
Somebody-
We don't?
Somebody mentioned about Henry Street. Have the, have the hoops are down? They're supposed to fix that up?
Yeah, I think all the hoops are up.
They're up now?
There was one that was broken off the pole, and we had to get a-
Recently?
We had to replace the backboard, but all the others, it was a steel hoop, and I think they're all done.
Recently?
Huh?
Recently?
It was all done last week, I think, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And the backboard has been ordered.
And you need some police supervision down there, because that gets kind of trashy.
Yeah, I'll take care of that.
Very trashy.
Yep.
I don't know if they have lights down there. I don't think they do.
They do not, no.
You know, and we're, we're in no position to be putting up lights, money-wise.
Just out of curiosity, do we have any basketball courts where they're not in residential neighborhoods that we could light for the kids at night?
Where?
Do we have any that are not in residential neighborhoods?
There are, there are really no recreational areas that are not in residential neighborhoods in this town.
Hmm. Okay.
And there was, there was talk about moving that top lot and putting another basketball?
There's a great deal of talk, but that's involved with that McCann Fields Improvement Committee. And they will have, they've already had several public hearings, and they'll be coming forward with more things in the coming months and, and so forth.
We should be able to find an area in this town where a basketball court would be acceptable.
I would think so, and I would-
I can, I can see what they're complaining about.
Yeah.
When you ta-ta-ta with the ball all the time, it drives you nuts.
Yeah. If it's not a lit court, and it's not intended to be used at night, then sure, I understand that.
We could find a place.
Just saying, I would think it would be a priority. We'd want to find a place where the kids could play at night.
Right.
You know, so they got a good place to go and healthy things to do that are the things that kids do. But, all right, I'll, I'll take, I'll get that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick follow-up, now that we're talking basketball. I want to thank the town manager, Heather Blakely, and the Recreation Director, because it was maybe three days later that all the hoops in town were replaced, reneted. So, every hoop in town has been updated.
Just, just so you'll know, because I like to be-
There is one hoop that's trying to-
Yeah, we still get the backboard. Because I like to be sure the proper people get a thank you. The new Rec Director, Steve Rowenfeld, and Heather Blakely, as you mentioned, both did great work in making sure they got done very quickly. And I, I was shocked at how fast it happened, so.
It was, it happened very fast. I mean, I mentioned it Monday night, and Thursday night, I was at West Street, at Morris Street, and it was all done. In regards to lighted basketball courts, we do not have none. And I am in agreement with Counselor Vando. I don't think it's a necessity right now. I, I think nine o'clock PM is, it's pretty dark to be playing basketball. I don't care if you're Michael Jordan or anybody else out there, go home. You know, you've played enough. But, you know, it's usually till sunset, and then we, usually people go home. Unfortunately, our parks are not policed well. It's been an issue since I can remember, being part of the Southbridge Little League Board many years ago. They are not patrolled well. So, that might change some of the attitudes that are presented at these courts during, you know, these times. You know, I'm, it's that time of year. I'm, I'm a baseball coach, so I'm at the park, I'm at the field three times a week, four times a week. So, I see a lot of people, and I did have a conversation. There was about fifteen gentlemen playing basketball today at Morris Street. And I, I, as soon as I finished my T-ball practice, I walked over, and I said, hey, guys, can you just stop? And can we just have a conversation? And I said, it, it took work to get these hoops up there. Can we take care of our court? Can we clean it? Can, can we watch what we, you know, what we just invested in? And I can tell you, the group of fifteen guys that was playing there today, all, all were in agreement. They were very thankful. And for the town doing that, replacing the, the hoops and to that effect. But our parks need to be policed more.
We'll get on that right away.
You know, we, down at Henry Street, we do have other towns that come in for tournaments and for baseball games. So, I know this past weekend, Quay Bog was here. It was Little League Opening Day, and Quay Bog was there. And, and, you know, it is what it is, but when you have police presence, people tend to tone it down, especially with their mouth. And I have zero tolerance for language, so it just drives me crazy. But when you have children down there that are hearing this, it's, it's not fair to them, or it doesn't look good for our town. So, but that, but I just want to say thank you to yourself, the acting town DPW Director, and also the Rec Director, for moving quickly. Because government usually works very slow, and they, they jumped on this and really did, did a nice service to our kids and our, our citizens. The only, the other, two things that I want to say, I want to say thank you to Sean for coordinating, once again, another great event. This time, I had the privilege of working with him, coordinating the alumni softball game. It was awesome to see some of our old classmates that we hadn't seen for a long time. But it was also good to see some just good old times softball. And I, and I, and I make, I just want to note that the MVP for the alumni game was Mr. Tony Santilli. He hit, I believe, four-for-four?
Couple home runs.
Two home runs. He hit a double. He made a diving catch in the outfield. For somebody that graduated in 1977, that man still moves, and he's still got it. So, I just want to publicly thank all the alumni that came out and played. We did raise some money for the Booster Club, and we did give them a couple bags of groceries for the food, Food Bank. So, we, we are thankful. And it just shows that there's a lot of people that do care of our community, and they want to see positive things. It was nice to be able to play on the new high school field and see that happen. And the last thing I have on this Thursday is National Day of Prayer. I just ask everybody to just take a moment and just pray over our nation, over our government, over all that that's happening. You know, we have veterans. We still have soldiers overseas and things happening, so just take a moment. It's National Day of Prayer on Thursday. So, if, if you celebrate it, if you believe in it, please participate. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. And I just briefly, I meant to do this earlier, but I wanted to just, just espouse upon the softball piece in terms of just thanking folks, certainly Counselor Carrasco, who did a, a great deal of work in trying, bless you, in trying to get some folks there, and taking care of shirts for the alumni game. And Katie Alicia, who's a Southbridge High grad, used to work for the school department, now is at Bay Path, who also helped out a lot with the, the alumni game. Coach Mario Markucci, who was able to come out to coach in the game. Coach Tom Cruzek was planning to, but wound up with another commitment that, that forced him out. Jack Jovan and Mike Montigny and Jacob Maldonado for, for coming out and filming and broadcasting the game. And, and, you know, Counselors Manna Estrada, Carrasco, Vecchia, and Steves, as well as the town manager, Steve Rowenfeld, our Rec Director, Maritza and Andy down in the Health Office. I'm going to blank on people. April Plouffe from, from downstairs in the financing.
John LaFlesh.
John LaFlesh and Richard Tucker, who served as our umpires, volunteered. Max Gullikson had a very good game. He, he certainly was a better pitcher than I.
Absolutely.
I did, Mr. Chairman, notice that when you were pitching, I had a little bit of a flashback to Afghanistan, because I saw so many rockets going out of the park that it turned out they were just softballs, but I wasn't sure at first. When, when Max was pitching, I noticed there wasn't that much outgoing fire. Just thought I'd mention that.
That's why I made the pitching change.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyways, on, on the school side, I just wanted to thank Principal Earls and Mike Montigny, and the teachers, Tony Santilli, several other teachers, Jason Stein, as well as some of the students who came out. And obviously, helping out on their side were a few of the firemen, who, I believe, a few of, I think, Councilman Man, and a few others kept referring to as traitors. I think Counselor Vecchia as well. So, you know, they, they did, did help themselves out. And of course, Sammy Carrasco for helping steal a run late in the game as well. So, just wanted to thank everybody involved with that, and certainly great causes for food share and the Booster Club. And with that, I will move on to Agenda Number 12, discussion of next meeting date.
Monday, May 18th, here at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
All right. And Agenda Number 13, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, we are adjourned.